So today we're going to start with studying or getting to know something, or introducing ourselves to this book, The Book of Wisdom of Ben Sira. And as I told you, the other name is Sirac. And I'll tell you, I'll explain to you why that name Sirac was given to it. Or the other name is Ecclesiasticus. And I'll tell you how those names came about. And I also want to make sure that you can make a distinction between Ecclesiasticus and the one that we just finished, Ecclesiastes. Ecclesiastes or Cohilath, that is the Hebrew name for Ecclesiastes, Cohilath. And we talked about the meaning of Cohilath. So that is different from this Ecclesiasticus. And so we're going to continue by praying. We're going to use a text from this book to pray. And we're going to take chapter 1, verses 11 through 30. I will use that as a prayer. And then we will proceed to talk about introductions. We just introduce the book. Basically, we'll talk about who wrote it, and why was it written, and where was it written? And the purpose and the main themes. Then we will talk about canonicality. When I talk about canonicality, I'll say a few words about what I mean by canonicality, or canon. And that will help us. There is a time that we are going to pick up this topic of biblical canon. And basically, when we talk about canon, we are talking about what are the books in the Bible for each of the religious bodies? Each of the Abrahamic religions. Abrahamic religions, all the religions that call Abraham as their father in faith. All religions that call Abraham as their father in faith. So we are talking about Judaism, the Jewish religion. They call Abraham is their father in faith. Christianity. And Christianity has a few, three main branches that have their number of books that do not agree. Some have more books than others. Okay, so we talk about Roman Catholicism. We talk about Greek Orthodox Church. And then we have the Protestant. All of them have their number of books. So there are certain books in others, they are not in others, but we call them canons. So if you want to say the Protestant Bible, you can also say the Protestant canon. The Roman Catholic canon, the Jewish canon, the Greek Orthodox canon. You are talking about the number of books that they accept as their Bible. Old Testament, the New Testament many times is the same from all these Christian communities. But the Old Testament is different. Number of books are different from one one to the other. So I will say something about canonicality. And the canon, the canon actually is the rule or the kind of criteria that a book must meet to be counted as inspired book in one denomination. So the Roman Catholics, they came out with criteria that a book must meet in order to be accepted as part of the Bible. If the book fails, the rule, some of the criteria, the book is taken out. So there are many books out there, there are many books out there that were written, but not all of them are in different, the different Bibles. So we will look at that. I would just say a few things about that because we'll find a time to deal with canonicality in general. But we want to talk about how this book, where this book can be found. Which Bibles you can find the wisdom of Ben Sira? Because it's not in all the canons. You can find it in one canon and not others. And then we'll talk about the main themes that this book treats. The main themes of wisdom of Ben Sira. And we will finish that today. And then we will talk about the theological message. What is the message about God, about the world that this book is talking about? And so when you pick a chapter from it and reading it, that must be, what should be in the back of your mind to be able to understand what the book is saying? And that we will treat, we will do next week, the theological message. But we will do our prayer, introduction, canonicality, and main themes today. So let us, let us now take a moment and pray by reading the wisdom of Ben Sira, chapter 1, verses 11 through 30. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. "The fear of the Lord is glory and exaltation, gladness and a festive crown. The fear of the Lord rejoices the heart, giving gladness, joy, and long life. Those who fear the Lord will be happy at the end; even on the day of death they will be blessed. The beginning of wisdom is to fear the Lord. She is created with the faithful in the womb; with the godly she was created from of old, and with their descendants she will keep faith. The fullness of wisdom is to fear the Lord. She inebriates them with her fruits; their entire house she fills with choice foods; their granaries with her produce. The crown of wisdom is the fear of the Lord, flowering with peace and perfect health. Knowledge and full understanding she reigns down; she heightens the glory of those who possess her. The root of wisdom is to fear the Lord; her branches are long life. The fear of the Lord drives away sins; where it abides it turns back all anger. Unjust anger can prevent, can never be justified; anger pulls a person to other ruin. Until the right time the patient remain calm; then cheerfulness comes back to them. Until the right time they hold back their words; then the lips of many will tell of their good sense. Among wisdom's treasures is the motto for knowledge; but godliness is an abomination to the sinner. If you desire wisdom, keep the commandments, and the Lord will bestow her upon you. For the fear of the Lord is wisdom and discipline; faithfulness and humility are his delight. Do not disobey the fear of the Lord; do not approach it with duplicity of heart; do not be a hypocrite before others; over your lips keep watch; do not exalt yourself lest you fall and bring dishonor upon yourself; for then the Lord will reveal your secrets and cast you down in the midst of the assembly; because you did not approach the fear of the Lord and your heart was full of deceit." Thank you, Lord, for bringing us together once again as we open our hearts for your teaching and your inspiration. Bless our session and make it inspiring and fruitful. And we ask this through Christ our Lord. Amen. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. So let us continue to delve into what we have today. We want to talk about wisdom of Ben Sira, the wisdom of Ben Sira. And remember that in Hebrew, in Hebrew, Ben, Ben means son of, the son of, the son of. So wisdom of, so if you say Yeshua Ben Sira, we are talking about Yeshua, son of Sira. Yeshua, son of Sira. So the name, we want to think about the name of the book itself, the name of the book, and then the author, they go together. The author's name was given to the book. So if we want to talk about it, we look at the name in Hebrew. The book's name is Yeshua Ben Sira. And Yeshua is Hebrew. Yeshua is the same, Yeshua is the Hebrew word for Jesus. Jesus means Yeshua, or Joshua. Joshua is the same as Jesus. That's the same name. So the person is called Jesus in English, but Yeshua, the son of Sira. So Yeshua Ben Sira, or Ben Sira. That's the name of the book in Hebrew, the original language. The original language is Hebrew. Now, Greek, the Greek, the Greek name for that book, Ben Sira, is Sirac. So the Greek is the one, when the Bible, when the Bible was translated into Greek, this Hebrew book was translated into Greek, it was called Sirac. So that name went on with the Hebrew name. Some called it Ben Sira, others called it Sirac, if they want to use the Greek name. And then in Latin, when the Bible was translated into Latin, the Vogit, Saint Jerome translated the entire Bible into Latin. It was called Ecclesiasticus. Ecclesiasticus was given to the book because of what is in the book. The book is full of advice and counseling and teaching values, the values. So it was basically used a lot by the church like a catechism book. This, the lot of things about my son, you learn to listen before you speak. And all that, all that, the church used this book extensively as a church book of catechism. People were taught, this is one of the earliest catechism books that the church used in the early stages. It was used to instruct people and as to how to live, how to behave. The rabbis also made references to it, but, but the church used it extensively. So the church called it, because it's a church book, the church called it Ecclesiasticus. Ecclesia means church. So it's the book of instruction in the, in the church. And I mean the Christian church, the entire Christian church, not just Catholic church. The entire Christian community used this book until at some point when the Protestants took it out of, of, of the Old Testament. So, so that is, that is the first thing that we want to talk about, about this book. And so let's continue and find out where, what context, how it originated. In what context it was, it originated. Okay, and so to talk about that, we know that it was written in Jerusalem between 190 B.C. to 180 B.C. So when you're talking about B.C., you are counting down, down all the way to zero. And then after that, you start counting 180, after the death of Christ, or C.E. in the common era. So you started counting forward. So it was written around 190, when the Israelites have already come back from exile, and the Jewish people had come back from exile, and they have rebuilt the temple. They have rebuilt the temple, this is the second temple era, the second temple. The first temple was created, was constructed by Solomon. And that temple was there until it was destroyed. It was destroyed around, when the, when the Jewish people were carried to exile in Babylon around 500 B.C. And they were in Babylon for a long time, and then they came back. And when they came back, they rebuilt the temple. So when they rebuilt the temple, that was what we call the second temple era. And so in these days, in those days, in Jerusalem, there were a lot of foreign powers taking a shot at, at, at the Jews. Just like, I can, I know something about this because my country, for instance, my country, Ghana, was first settled in, was colonized by the Portuguese. They started, they colonized, but they couldn't stay there because you need a lot of people from your country to be able to occupy the place in order to be able to hold it. So but they didn't know, not many Portuguese could settle in Ghana, so they lost the territory. And they gave it out to the Dutch. The Dutch also colonized my country for a while. But they also could not get a lot of their nationals to stay there, so they lost it to the Danes, Denmark. Denmark also colonized Ghana for a while, and they also could not hold it, and then they gave it out to the British. So the British were the one, the last ones that finally, the British could not hold on, the queen could not hold on to it, so they had to give it out. And Ghana fought for independence in 1957. That Ghana became. So also in this, in, in, in Israel, in Israel, you had a lot of encroachment by foreigners trying to colonize the place, trying to. So the Egyptians were, were, were ruling the place for a while, and the Jews were fighting against them, fighting against them. Then the foreigners, other foreigners called the Cileusids also were invading. These are, the Cileusids are mostly Greek, Greek people, the Greeks. They were also trying to have their, their shark at, at ruling the, 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 ruling the Jews. And the Jews were fighting for their lives. So the book was written to, to strengthen the sense of pride in Jewish laws, to help the young people to hold fast to their faith, not to be taken, not to be, not to, not to be swayed by the fancy things that the Greeks were bringing. The Greeks were asking them to eat pork, because the Jewish people did not eat pork. They forced them, forcing them to dress like, to dress like Greeks, to get involved in the games and Olympics and all these kinds of stuff. And the Jewish, for the Jewish, it does an abomination. So this book was written to instill Jewish, to help the Jewish young people to get, strengthen them in their values, Jewish values, and Jewish identity, to preserve Jewish identity against the cultural imperialism of the Greeks and Egyptians. So when you read, when you're reading these advice, a whole lot of advice, a major part from chapters 1 through, through 43 is all about moral instructions, moral instructions. How to, how to, how to do the right thing and run away from bad behavior. That's what you read in there. Majority of the book is talking about moral morality and how to do good and to be of good behavior and, and be of good Jewish behavior. So that's what you find, that is the origin of the book. And the last thing we want to say about that by way of introduction is the translation. So the book was written in Hebrew. But, and it was written in Hebrew by Yeshua Ben Sira. But his grandson was the one who migrated from Israel to Egypt. And when he went to Egypt, he arrived in Egypt around 132 B.C. 132 B.C. And when he arrived there, there were a lot of, a lot of Israelites because when the, the Greeks went to Israel, they, they kind of scattered a lot of the Israelites. Israelites were all over the place, they were in different places, especially in Egypt. A lot of Israelites were in Egypt, in Alexandria. And those who went there, they spoke Greek, they didn't speak Hebrew. They lost their Hebrew because they were in the diaspora. They had scattered, diaspora, I mean, diasporian means to scatter, to scatter around. So every diaspora, you can say American diaspora, you are talking about Americans who are in other places. They are the American diaspora, Americans who are spread out, scattered around. Some, in the Ghana, the Ghanaians will call me a Ghanaian diaspora, because I am not, I am in somewhere else. And so, so there.
Is the word dispersed?
Dispersed, yes, yes. It's the same, it's a word dispersed, the English is dispersed, to be dispersed. So dia, but the Greek word, it comes from Greek. The Greek word is diasporian, okay, diaspora. So the Israelites who were in, in Egypt spoke Greek. Alexandria, so Egypt, we are talking about Egypt. But the Greeks at that time had conquered Egypt. So the Greeks, Alexander the Great gave his own name to the city of Alexandria in Egypt. So the name Alexandria, you see today, the city of Alexandria in Egypt, it was conquered by the Greeks. The Greek king Alexandria, Alexander conquered that and instituted, made that city the Greek city. And so the Jewish people who were there also lost their Hebrew, they spoke Greek. So the grandson of, of Yeshua Ben Sira, the grandson of Yeshua Ben Sira, translated his grandfather's book into Greek to help the diasporic Jewish people so that they can continue holding on to the Jewish, their Jewish life. They have lost the language, so they could not read the book in Hebrew. So the grandson is the one who translated that. This is one of the most documented, well documented book in the Bible that we, one of the most documented book that we know in the Bible. Because the grandson of the author, he gives us, he gives us the foreword. He wrote the foreword to the book. So when you take this book, go to the beginning, you will see the foreword. And read that foreword, the grandson is talking about when he arrived in Egypt. We found all that in the Bible. He, he talks about how he arrived in Egypt and why he wrote the book and gives an advice to how to read the book, actually, what to use the book for, what to use the book for. So, so this is one of the well-written book in the Bible. There are other, many other books, they were all, we tried to, to redact it and make it, shape it. But this book was well, well written. So, so when he got to Alexandria in Egypt, he translated Ben Sira, his grandfather's book, from Hebrew to Greek so that the diasporic Jews can continue to read it and continue to help their children, raise their kids, to learn Jewish values. And that's a very important information for us. Okay, so, so now let's talk about canonicality. So let's talk about canonicality. So I'm going to go back again to say, tell you a few things that I said about canons. So there were a lot of books that were written out there about Jewish life, about Israel, about, about Christians. Even the New Testament books, there are many also. The four Gospels are not the only Gospels that we have. There's a Gospel of Thomas, there's, there are all kinds of Gospels out there. There's even a Gospel of Mary Magdalene, something like that. There are a lot of books that were written. So some of them were written by the Christians, others were written by Israelites. They composed, there are a lot of books out there. Now, the, the religions, what I said, Abrahamic religions, there was a time that each of them will go into that big part of books and select which ones are going to be their Bible. So that's, that's what happened. There is a time, like among the, in the Jewish community, in Judaism, they selected a group of 70 elders, a group of elders. And those elders were the ones who met in a council, a council that is called the Council of Jania in 9080, 9080. So we are in 2021, 90, I'm talking about 90. Those Jewish elders were the ones who gathered, who selected which books are going to be their Bible. And remember that Judaism doesn't have the New Testament. There's nothing like a New Testament for Judaism. They only have the, the, what we call Old Testament, that is their Bible. So all their books, they selected 24 of them. So the Jewish Bible has 24 books. Now, when we come to deal with that, the Jewish, I mean, the Old Testament, we will talk about the canons of the Old Testament. Because they count all the prophets, all the minor prophets as one book. All the minor prophets, they made it one book. So they have 24 books in their Bible. And those are the, those are the books that form the, the Old Testament for us. Now, the Christians, when the Christians came along, they also went to, they had, they selected not just the Old Testament, but they also selected books for the New Testament. The New Testament books were 27. And then the, the Old Testament books, the Christians selected not only what is in the Jewish Bible, but they added, they chose other seven books that talk about Jewish life between, between, when they came back from Babylon all the way to, to Jesus' time, Jewish life. They selected seven books that talk about that. Those seven books, Yeshua Ben Sira was one of those, seven books. Okay, so they had, they had 39 books plus seven books. That makes it 46 books of the Old Testament. All the Christians, they were using this before the Protestant Reformation. When Martin Luther, then got, when he got out of the church, he took the seven books out and maintained 39, plus the New Testament 27. So the Protestant Bible, the Protestant Bible doesn't have the seven books that the Catholics, that we all use, all the Christians used before. They took the seven out. And I'll tell you how, how that came about and how they brought it back. But for now, I want you to know that if you go to the Jewish Bible, if you go to the Jewish Bible, the Jewish Bible, you will not find, uh, 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 you will not find Ben Sirah, that book in there because it was composed later, it was finalized later. Uh, but the rabbis used Sirach and another book called Maccabees because of their promotion of Jewish law and Jewish culture. If you look at, this book promotes Jewish culture, so they made references to it. But you will not find it in the Jew, Hebrew canon, you will not find it in the Hebrew Bible. So from now on, if I say Hebrew canon or Jewish canon, I'm talking about the Jewish Bible, okay? The Catholic canon is the Catholic Bible. The Protestant canon is the Protestant Bible, okay? The Greek Orthodox Bible is a, is a Greek, a Greek Orthodox canon, okay? So canon can be, can be the place of Bible, the number of books that each, uh, community has. So, uh, uh, Christianity, so as I was saying to you, Christianity, all Christians used Sirach. Sirach was one of the books that all Christians used as their Old Testament. Sirach or Ecclesiastes, as part of the Old Testament until the Protestant Reformation. The Protestant Reformation was in the sixteenth century. So fifteen hundred years, we all use the same, the church, it's only Christianity, we all use the same, uh, forty-six books in the Old Testament, forty-six books, plus twenty-seven in the New Testament. This is the Bible that we use from the beginning, okay? Including Ecclesiastes. Now, Martin Luther was the one who broke out of the, he was a Catholic too, he was, he was using the same books. Martin Luther broke out of the Catholic Church and translated the Bible from Latin to the first vernacular language, I mean, the first, uh, language, the Bible, a vernacular language, the Bible was translated in, that was German. So when he translated the Bible, in the Old Testament, he took out the seven books that the Jewish people do not have in the, in, in there, but the church was using together. He took the seven books out, okay? So those seven books, when we study the canons, uh, we'll find time to study the canons of each church. Uh, but for now, let me just mention that there are, the Book of Tobit, eh, you will hear, you, most, how many of you have heard the book Tobit before? Tobit, uh, is one of the books, or one of the books in the, in a, in a, in a Catholic Bible that the Christians use, that is not found in the, uh, uh, in the Protestant Bible. But it, it talks about Jewish life, uh, Jewish life in a latter part of their lives before Jesus came, in the second temple area, eh, eh, era. Uh, Tobit, uh, Judith, how many of you have heard the name Judith? The book Judith, the Book of Judith, yeah, okay? Uh, uh, how many of you have heard of the Book of Maccabees? The Maccabees, hmm, the Maccabees, yes. Yeah, there's a first and second Maccabees, there are two books. One is the first Maccabees, and second is the second Maccabees. And then, uh, you have the Book of Wisdom of Solomon, which is one of our books that we are going to study next, eh, the Wisdom of Solomon, the Book of Wisdom, which we read very much, uh, parts of it during, uh, funerals. We read that a lot, eh, during funerals. Uh-huh, and then the Book of, uh, Sirach, hmm, the one we are studying now, uh, is one of those books, one of the seven books. And then the last one is Baruch, eh, Baruch. Baruch, we are going to read Baruch this coming Sunday, the second Sunday of Advent, is the first reading is from Baruch, okay? Baruch, and, and so, so, eh, that's, that's, these are the books that we are talking about, uh, the wisdom books. And they took them out, they took them out of, of the, of the Protestant, uh, canon. So the Protestants began to have thirty-nine books of the Old Testament. From the sixteenth century, the Protestants had thirty-nine books of the Old Testament and twenty-seven of the New Testament, okay? Making sixty-six books in the, in the Protestant Bible. But the Catholics continued with seventy-three books, Roman Catholics continued with seventy-three books. And the Greek Orthodox, Greek Orthodox had all the Roman Catholic books, plus they add five more, they add five, added five more from the part of books that are written. So the Greek Orthodox Bible, they have seventy-eight books, okay? So they have fifty-one, fifty-one, uh, uh, Old Testament and twenty-seven New Testament, okay? So this is how, I want, just wanted you to know that, uh, eh, eh, these are the numbers of books that you can find in a different, because, uh, they have canons. Now, in a later time, the Protestants, they brought back, they brought back the seven books. So some of the Protestant books today, because of inter, inter-denominational, uh, 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 conversations and, and understanding, the Protestants brought back some of these, uh, seven books, especially when you go to graduate schools that are learning, schools of learning, you will see that, uh, some of the Protestant books have the seven books brought back, but they call them a different name, they call them, uh, apocrypha, okay? Apocrypha, uh, means, uh, like you are not sure of its origin, uh, you are not, it's not, it's not really, uh, it doesn't carry the same weight, okay? Uh, eh, eh, it's not as important as the rest of the book. So they call the, if you, if you pick up a Bible and you see, uh, with apocrypha, eh, it's written on it, with apocrypha, it is a Protestant Bible, okay? It's from the Protestant origin. The Catholics, the Roman Catholics don't call it that. The Roman Catholics call those seven books the dietero-canonical books, okay? So you see some of the, you, some of the Bibles is written, uh, uh, with dietero-canonical books. That means dietero is second, canon is the rule, eh? The, the, the rule that made it, uh, the, the criteria. So this is the second criteria books, okay? Uh, second criteria books. So the Catholics call it dietero-canonical and the Protestants call it apocrypha. And many of the Protestant Bibles don't have it at all, they don't have the seven books. But if they have it, they call it apocrypha, okay? So that's how you can make a distinction, but we will come back later on to give our time to canons, the canons of the different religions, Abrahamic religions. And by the way, Muslims also, uh, use some parts of the Old Testament. So Muslims also have their canon, yeah, yeah? Uh, so we will talk about that later on because Muslims, Muslims also call Abraham as their father in faith, Ibrahim. Ibrahim, Abraham was the father, I mean, I, I just want, I'm, I'm, this is very dear to my heart. You know that, you know that Abraham had two children, right? Abraham had two children. Abraham's firstborn is not Isaac. Abraham's firstborn is not Isaac, Isaac was a miracle baby. Isaac was, uh, was a miracle baby, it's like a little, uh, eh, eh, uh, Isaac, Isaac was like a gift given to, it's like the immaculate conception thing, you know? Isaac was like, was like, because they were very old, it was not possible for them to conceive, and, 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 and so, but that was later, Isaac was later. Abraham's firstborn is Ishmael. And Ishmael, because Abraham's wife could not give, uh, child, uh, uh, could not get pregnant, so, uh, she, she took the slave girl, and the slave girl is from Egypt, okay? Egyptian girl was called Hagar, uh, Hagar. So Sarah, uh, Sarah gave her slave girl to her husband to make a child so that they can have their marriage, they can have their, their life, uh, solidified, they need a child. And they were doing that very much in those days. They could just, like, like Jacob, Jacob, uh, married two sisters, uh? Jacob married two sisters, uh, Rachel and, and, uh, what's the other, Leah? Leah and Rachel, okay? They are two sisters. But each of them had their slave girls. And, and at the beginning, Leah and Rachel could not give birth. So you know who was giving birth? Their, their slaves, so Rachel's slave slept with Jacob and made a child for Rachel. And Leah's slave girl slept with Jacob and made a child for Leah, okay? So, so many of those names, many of those names of the twelve tribes of Israel, Jacob's children, the twelve sons of Israel, many of them were not born by Rachel or Leah, who are the legitimate wives of Jacob, they were born by their slave girls, okay? So that was, that was so much, and, uh, uh, you don't want to, uh, you don't want to go into details of those, yeah, yeah? Don't, don't look at that, just follow the story, okay? Follow the story, don't get scandalized, okay? Alright, so enough of the canonicity. So I'm saying that Wisdom Ben Sirah cannot be found in the Hebrew canon, okay? In the Hebrew Bible, but they made use of it, the rabbi made references to it. It was in the Christian, the Christians were the one who made extensive use of it. And the Christians used it until the Protestant Reformation, when the Protestants took it out, together with other six books, seven books out. And then later on, the Protestants brought it back, but they, they look at it as like second-class readings, okay? Uh, uh, and so, but the Catholics, we count them all together, uh, forty-six in the, in the Old Testament, the Catholic Bible is forty-six in the Old Testament, twenty-seven New Testament. The Protestants have thirty-nine Old Testament and twenty-seven New Testament, okay? That, that should be, eh, eh, enough for us. And then the Greek Orthodox, uh, the Greek Orthodox is, is fifty-one Old Testament and twenty-seven New Testament, okay? Uh, so, uh, let's move on, uh, that is the canonicity of Wisdom of Ben Sirah, the book. Now, what are the main themes? What are the themes that it is trying to highlight, okay? This book seeks to highlight certain themes. Uh, it has a strong sense, uh, strong interest in salvation history, okay? And when we say salvation is history, we are talking about Jewish Israelite salvation history, okay? Israelite salvation history. And I've told you something about Israelites, uh, the name Israelite and then the Jewish, uh? Uh, they, they're, they are not this one in the same, uh? They were all Israelites in Egypt before the Exodus, okay? So they were all Israelites. But when they came to the Promised Land, uh, they were still Israel, David ruled Israel, Solomon ruled Israel, but then after Solomon, they divided into the North and the South. The North was called Israel, the South was called Judah, okay? Just one tribe, Judah, the South. The Judah is where Jerusalem is, Judah is the Jewish people, okay? So, um, as they lived together, the North was Israel, the South was Judah. At some point in the seventh century, the North was conquered by the Assyrians. They were conquered, hmm? They were conquered and they were scattered all over the place in Mesopotamia, they were intermarried with people, so that was wiped out, Israel was wiped out. So only Judah remained. Judah is where Jerusalem is, Judah is the Jewish people. They also were there for two hundred years, two more hundred years, and then they too were taken away by Babylon, some of them, not all of them, they, they, uh, uh, they are, they are, they are kings. They were taken away to Babylon and then they returned. They were the ones who became the Jewish people, the Jewish community. So, eh, they were the ones also who took on the name Israel. So when you're talking about Israel now, it is not, uh, there are a lot of people in that, there are a lot of Arabs who, who are part of, who are Jewish, uh, who are, I don't know, Jewish. They are part of the Israelites. All those people are kings, folks, together, they are all together, they all call Abraham, eh? They all call Abraham as their father, they all come from Abraham, eh? The Arabs, the Arabs, eh, they call, Arabs came from Abraham, they are part of Abraham, uh, uh? So they're, they all called the same father. Abraham had a child, Ishmael, who is the ancestor of Arabs. All Arabs, Ishmael is their father, and all the Israelites, uh, uh, Isaac is the, the, that miracle baby is their father, okay? But all of them go to Abraham, Abraham, Abraham. That's why Islam also calls Abraham, Ibrahim, as their father in faith, okay? So, uh, so let's look at, eh, so their interest is salvation. Eh, this book is talking mainly about salvation history. And when we talk about salvation history, we are talking about, eh, these themes, election. Israel has its, uh, the Jewish people think of themselves as being elected. When you say elected, it means chosen, eh? We say they are the chosen people, eh? That's election, eh? Chosen people, I mean, when you elect somebody, you choose, right? So it stresses this idea, this idea, this theme of election. The Israelites feel of themselves are the ones who have been chosen. And they're saying that, because the book is saying that, because, because i- i- it wants to instill some pride, a sense of pride in the Jewish people to keep their faith. They are the chosen ones, we are the chosen ones, don't, don't subscribe, don't go eat pork, don't go to all those foreign, foreign, uh, they may be cool, but they are not the real thing. We are the chosen people, so stick to our tradition, stick to our culture, stick to our values, okay? So that, that theme of election is very important for this book, okay? Uh, that, and so, eh, and so, uh, and then another theme that matches with salvation history is promise, okay? So when God chose them, you remember when God chose Abraham, God promised Abraham, eh? God promised Abraham, he promised Abraham a lot of, eh, eh, a big nation, you will be a father of nations. And then promised Abraham of a land, the Promised Land, okay? The Promised Land. So he gave Abraham not just a people, he says you will be a father of nations and you, you, I will give you a land, and that land is the Promised Land. And your hands, your descendants are going to occupy that land. That's the, that's what they, so that land is theirs. They feel that that land is there, so when the, when the Greeks came there and trying to take them away, they're trying to defend themselves, okay? So that promise is a very important thing, the promise, the promise. And then Exodus, eh, we are talking about Exodus. Exodus is when, when they were moved from Egypt, when they migrated from Egypt to the Promised Land, uh, they were going to the Promised Land. Exodus, the theme of Exodus, God took them out of Egypt. It was God who liberated them. That was when they began to have Passover, the feast of Passover, which became our Eucharist, eh? That's, that's, it, it comes from Exodus. When they left Egypt and they ate that meal, they ate that meal quickly, a meal, the, 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 the dough did what, cannot get a chance to rise, the dough cannot rise. It's a, it's a bread that are unleavened bread, because the dough cannot rise, uh, because you have no time, no time. They have to run away, so they can wait for the dough to rise, so they ate that quickly and then run away. That's what became our communion wafer, that we use bread that is unleavened, eh? An unleavened bread, okay? That's why, that we have that wafer, uh, is, is to, to abide by those, uh, specifications. But then, um, Exodus- But then Exodus is one of the themes of salvation history, okay? And then covenant, covenant is the law, when God moved them out of Egypt. God made a law, made a covenant with them, a covenant, a covenant is a, a contract. God made a contract with them, you will be my people, I will be your God. I will protect you, I will fight your battles, I will give you a land and then you obey my rules. And the rules were the law, God gave them a law, these are the things that I want you to do and I will protect you. Once you do these things, that's your part in the contract and I will support you, okay? All these things, the book sees these things as God's action on behalf of them. God's action and God's event, God is the one doing everything, okay? When they go to war and they win the war, God is the one who won the war, okay? When they, when they, when it rains and they get good food, a lot of food, God is the one who did it. Everything is explained in the terms of God, so, so, so wisdom Ben Sirah, this book. Looks at events as that, it is basically the wisdom from the lens of Israel. How Israel sees wisdom, in the other books, we talked about wisdom as a universal thing. This one, this book is essentially Jewish wisdom, wisdom according to Jewish life, okay? So it's a particular wisdom, not universal wisdom, as in Job, as in Ecclesiastes, as in Proverbs, which we have seen already. Those wisdom, those idea of wisdom are more universal, you can find it in other places. This wisdom, you, you need to go to the Jewish people to get it, okay, to understand it, okay? So that's, that's one of the themes. And then the other themes that it highlights is that it is very Levitical, when, when I say Levitical, it is very priestly. Levite is a priestly family, it is very sensitive to cultic cult. You know what a cult is? A cult is when you have somebody that can do no wrong and purity and, and everything has to be cookie cutter. And, and uh, uh, issues about sin, they are very conscious about sin and doing morality. That's why many of the wisdom books don't do more much about morals. Because wisdom is about teaching, it's about explanation, it's about consideration. But this book, this book goes, embraces morality, because it's a particular wisdom. It's a particular wisdom of Israel, so they, they, they are very strict with morality. And remember, they are teaching young children who, they are teaching Israelites under attack. By another foreign values, so they have to be strict, they have to insist on morals and, and things like that. So Wisdom Ben Sirah himself was a, is a priest who also teaches. And that is, he was prophetic too, he was prophetic, that is, he's teaching his uh, uh. He's speaking in God's name, it's interpreting the law, okay? So that is it, when you're reading anything from there, you have to be conscious of the fact that this book is very cultic. It's very priestly, it's more sense of holiness and, 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 and purity and stuff like that, morality. The last thing, theme that it concerns itself with is that it is interested in Jewish wisdom. And as I've said before, but now we say it in details, that it is more concerned about, about teaching wisdom. In the Jewish mode, not wisdom in the, in the universal worldly secular mode. This is basically theological wisdom, okay? Uh, Ecclesiasticus or Sirach or Ben Sirah is a theological book, theological wisdom. Very theological and particular, not universal, okay? And, and so, uh, this is opposed to the universal wisdom that we see in Proverbs, as I said. In the book of Job and in the book of Ecclesiastes, okay? So these are the things that we need to know about the book. We are, next week, we are going to read some chapters, a chapter, I am going to give you. I'm going to give you uh, homework. This particular homework, we're going to do a test when we come back next week, the finals. We will do the finals next, next Thursday. Uh, and, um, but I want you to read, because next week we are going to talk about afterlife. Because this book deals with afterlife, it talks about death, sickness and death and afterlife, okay? So I want you to read uh, Ben Sirah, chapter thirty-eight, chapter thirty-eight. And that chapter talks about sickness, bodily sickness. And I like this one very much, because when we get here next week, when we come back. I think we'll be able to get some help for those who don't want to take the medicine, the doctor's medicines. And who don't want to take the vaccines, nah, I'm kidding, I'm kidding, nothing against those who don't want to take the vaccines. But I hope we get something from here, some wisdom from here. Uh, as to how, as a religious person, how you should treat medicines in the world, okay? How you should treat, the treatments that come from the science. This book is very, although for itself, it's really a very, very good book. Uh, uh, for engaging religion, engaging science. So read that and uh. If you have some more time, after you finish reading thirty-eight, add chapter forty-one, okay? If you get it, another time, but read thirty-eight by, by all means, thirty-eight. But if you have extra time, read forty-one too, chapter forty-one, okay? So chapter thirty-eight, compulsory and then optional, chapter forty-one. Chapter forty-one talks mostly about death, but thirty-eight talks about sickness and death, okay? All right. Okido, I'm going to stop here and see if we have any question out there, we can take it. Yes, Elaine. Uh, no, I said the last but one session. Yeah, that will be next week, so next Thursday, we will finish, next Thursday is the last one, okay, we'll be there, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, so he did that, one of the reasons that, which are not totally satisfactory. But one of the reasons was that he wanted to, to differ from the, the Catholic Church. He wanted to make something different and therefore, he could not, he could not change anything in the New Testament. Because that was essentially Christian book, the New Testament is, was written by Christians, so he could not change that one. But he went to the Old Testament and then, because uh, some of these seven books. Are not found in the Hebrew Bible, he adopted what the Hebrew canon has. And says, I am just only going to use what the Judaism, what the, what the, uh. What Judaism's Bible has as my Old Testament, our Old Testament. And then, so that's why he took the seven books out, yeah, because the seven books are part of Jew. They, they talk about Jewish life, but the Jewish people themselves don't have it in their canon. Okay, so the, so the Jewish book, uh, they have twenty-four books. Because they count all the minor prophets as one book, so they have twenty-four. But if you count them, if you count the minor prophets, one, one after the other, you will get thirty-nine books. So that's what Martin Luther took, he says, I'm taking the Jewish canon as the Old Testament. And then strike out the seven books that he has used for fifteen hundred, where the church has used, Christianity has used for fifteen hundred. Just to make a difference from, from uh, uh, Catholicism, yeah, yeah. So the reformers did that, yeah, yeah. And together with the Reformation, they also did this around the same time, in the Council of Trent. The Catholic Church affirmed the forty-sixth book, books. And Protestants affirmed their new canon, uh, until recently, when they began to entertain. Entertain for study purposes, they began to entertain the seven books back, but they called, they put them in a section called apocrypha. Something like doubtful, doubtful sources, okay? Okay, yeah, okay, all right. Uh, if there's no other question, I think when you read these texts that I've given you, you will have more questions. Because he has to do with sickness and death, oh, yeah, where are you? Judith, I can't see you, okay? Ah ha, it's, this book that we are studying is called Ben Sirah, Wisdom of Ben Sirah. That's the, that's how you see wisdom of Ben Sirah, some books has it as Ben Sirah. Other Bibles, Catholic Bible, once you have a Catholic Bible, you, it's in there. Uh, Ecclesiasticus, Ecclesiasticus, remember, it is different from Ecclesiastes. Ecclesiastes is the one that says, there's a time to eat, there's a time to sleep, there's a time to, to be lazy, a time to be all that, okay? That is Ecclesiastes, we have finished that, we are talking about Ecclesiasticus. Or other Bibles have it as Sirach, S-I-R-A-C-H. The Jerusalem Bible calls, calls it Sirach, I think so, yeah. Uh, or the good, if you have a Good News Bible or one of those Bibles, but. The best one for our study is the New American Bible, okay? The New American Bible translation is the one that is good for Bibles, is good for Bible study. Or the New Revised Standard Version, the New Revised Standard Version or the New American Bible. These versions are good, or the Catholic Edition of the Bible. Uh, we will find time to talk about the different Bibles and which ones are good for Bible study, I always do that. Yes, so you, you will find in the Ecclesiasticus or Sirach or Ben, Wisdom of Ben Sirah, okay? All right, so you read chapter thirty-eight, chapter thirty-eight compulsory, if you don't read anything at all, chapter thirty-eight, you should read that. And then if you have more time, you can read also chapter forty-one. So thank you all very much, may God bless you, give you restful sleep and wake you up tomorrow to continue your life. Once the machine is working, you keep living, okay? God bless you, all right.